All right, why don't y'all join me and stand for a prayer and a pledge of allegiance. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for bringing us together today on this beautiful winter's day, and we just turn this agenda over to you. We've got a few things on here that we need to make decisions on, and we just pray for your direction and guidance. We thank you for Christmas time. We can celebrate the birth of our Savior. We thank you for the beautiful square that we enjoy here in cooperation with the city. We thank you for those that come to town and support our merchants. We're thankful for our first responders, those that work at the hospital tirelessly. We thank you for our volunteer firefighters and our local fire department. Thank you for our local officials, Laura. We just ask your blessings this holiday season upon all of them. We are grateful for Thanksgiving holidays and time with our families. We'll just direct our attention now to county business in Christ's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome to Commissioner's Court today, the 22nd of November 2021, just after 9:00 a.m. We're here in our Commissioner's courtroom, and I'll begin with opportunity for public comments in Agenda Number One, and this would be for anything non-agenda, if there's anyone that would like to address the court in accordance with our Open Meetings Act. And of course, you may also address the court on any of the agenda items as we get to them. If there's no one to speak at this time, I'll move on for a couple of sets of minutes, the first one being a couple of weeks ago when we had our first regular meeting of the month, and I've got a set of minutes documenting that meeting that I need consideration for approval.
Make a motion to approve the minute.
I think I heard Commissioner Parker first and Commissioner Fitch second. Is there any discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye. And then we have one week later, on the 15th, one week ago, we met here briefly to canvass the vote from the constitutional amendment election that we had, and a brief set of minutes there for your consideration as well.
Make a motion to approve it.
Another motion by Commissioner Parker.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Fitch. Any comments or questions? All in favor of approval of the November 15 minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Item number four, report from commissioners regarding roadwork status within their precincts. Commissioner Parker, I'll defer to you.
We have been scavenging some on County Road 4325 and County Road 3130, also been doing some patching, trying to get some before the rainy wet season hits us and before the, some of the guys, some of the guys be off starting here in a couple of weeks. So trying to get as much of that done as we can. We've also, also side cut 4710. It had gotten real bad, and some of the buses were hitting limbs and stuff on it. So we went down and done it last week, and that's got a tree or two up that we had down, so.
Did you ever utilize that special spray that you got from Waco or wherever that was designed to?
I have used it, yes, sir. I hadn't got any this year, probably will sometime, maybe right around the first year.
Did it work and do what it was supposed to last year?
Mm-hmm.
Commissioner Applewise?
We've been patching from Talco to Argo to everywhere in between, and we're just trying to get every of the roads done, and we put a few covets in, one on 30, 45, and tried to getting all that done, and mostly just trying to get all of the things ready for the winter months. We're just trying to get started, get finished.
Thank you. Commissioner Fitch?
I've been scavenging and patching on 1070. We've still got a couple more miles on that road to get it in good shape. We had several trees down over a couple different days over the last couple of weeks with some storms. We had a pretty good storm in the Monticello community one night. Had some straight line winds that did a lot of damage, and some roofs were messed up, and vehicles got some trees on them, and they had some rough storm out there one night. We're working on 2910, doing some patching on it, and we're putting up some delineators and signs to try to make it a little safer, slow some folks down on that road there. And we put four covets in out on 2850, and been doing some patching and some minor repairs, just kind of all over the precinct, getting ready for winter.
Thank you. Commissioner Parchman?
We've been mostly installing new covets, and we have been replacing lots of covets, lots of patching going on and scavenging.
That it? All right. Item number five. Oh, there you are. I didn't know who that was that stepped out. I thought it might have been you. Item number five, consider and possibly approve adding additional funds in the amount of $7,000 to the election administrator's budget. This would be for a mass mailout of voter registration cards. Pam Holmes is here. Pam, tell us about this need.
Well, I apologize for the need to even have to be here and bring this up before y'all, but this is something that happens every two years. We do a mass mailout of voter registration cards. If you're a voter in Titus County, you get a new one every two years. And so this happens, this will be happening at the beginning of 2022, and we need the funds to pay for it. I did not consider it in my budget because it didn't happen last year, and so it just kind of slipped my mind. But I'd like to add a line item to my budget listing specifically devoted to this, so that I would be reminded every year, do I need to budget for this or not? And so anyway, I have an estimate here from our printer, our vendor that does this for us every other year, and we have 17,000, just over 17,400 voters in Titus County. And for the, it's 30, it's, excuse me, for 17,000 voters' registration cards, it would be 1,07659. And then for the postage, it's 5,202 dollars is the total for the cards and the postage, I'm sorry. And then, yeah, this quote is not very clear. But anyway, I'm asking for 7,000 to cover all of the costs, and if there's anything, but it would only be what's related to the mass mailout of the voter registration cards.
And tell me, and tell everybody, I guess, these are people that are currently registered?
Yes.
It's not mailing out to people that might be possibly?
No, no, no. It's what, if you're, if you're carrying your voter registration card around in your wallet, your billfold, it's an orange card. The new ones will be blue, and it only goes to currently registered voters.
And it's not an application? It is?
No.
Here is your renewed voter card that'll replace the kind of worn one that sits in my drawer at home?
Because your voter's registration, your voter's registration card has an expiration date on it, and it will expire in December, December 31st of '21. So you need a new one.
And then when somebody doesn't receive it because they've moved, how does that process work?
We get it returned in the mail, and then we process it in the Texas Elections Administration Management System, which is the software that we use with the state, with Secretary of State. And so how we process that is we report it as returned mail, and if it has a forwarding address, then we will send them an address confirmation card so they could tell us where they're at. If it's without a return address, if they're unable to forward or anything like that, then we just put it in there, and they go on the suspense list for two years. After they've been on the suspense list for two years, they get canceled if we don't hear from anybody, you know, anyway. But we try, we try everything we can to get them located and get them their correct address on everything, so.
All right. Okay. And Barbara, would we take that out of contingency if we were to fund that?
I recommend we take it out of the elections fund balance. That's a separate account, and there's sufficient funds there to pay for that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Which is just taking it from an existing savings account rather than drawing down on our contingency fund. Okay. 7,000 will do that. What about the subsequent steps that you just described that comes after that? Do you have enough money to send out those secondary mailings?
That's just all part of our office operations.
Okay. All right. Any questions for Pam about the need to do this? Main thing is, this is not, like you told me the other day, this is not optional. We have to do this every couple of years.
It is not optional.
And so probably we should get something on there as a reminder to us to budget for this every couple of years. Any questions, comments, or a motion?
I make a motion, we approve the $7,000.
Motion is made by Commissioner Parchman to add funds to Pam's budget to allow her to do the mass mailout of voter registration cards that occurs every couple of years.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Pam.
Thank you. Appreciate your time this morning.
Thank you. Item number six, consider and possibly approve additional funds for the purchase of a new service truck for Cookeville VFD. This was Commissioner Fitch's request to put this on there, so I'll let him give you the explanation as to why he felt like it was appropriate to put this on there. We've already discussed this before, but...
So we, when they came to court, they found a used truck for 45,000, and we told them to keep looking, try to, we want to, you know, support them and get a new truck, and but we had already approved 40,000. They ended up finding a truck just like what they needed for 45,000, and due to the shortages, that's why that price is $5,000 higher than normal. Maybe we won't have to do this next year, but we may be in a slump on vehicles for a while. But I want to make a motion that we pay that additional 5,000. And then Cookeville is taking that truck, they already received the truck, and they're putting about 15,000 into the bed and the unit that goes on the back of it. They're doing all that theirself, so.
And this is a 2020 model?
With a chassis.
2020 model. But it was brand new, which certainly was better than that one that they were describing to us that had?
A hundred?
Tens of thousands of miles.
Hundred and something, 140,000 or so.
And so they felt, they felt fortunate that they were able to find this one. So again, we previously had talked about this. I believe we had previously approved that, but this makes it official, and we have here in front of me the document from this McKinney Allen Ford dealership showing the purchase of a 2020 Ford F-350.
I make a motion that we approve and pay them additional 5,000 for the truck.
Okay, motions made for to approve this purchase, again, that's already been received.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parchman. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, there are none. All right, item number seven. Little background here. As you know, just as a reminder, there's been some discussion even at the last meeting that we had here. The county is just one of all these entities, all these municipalities across the country that are receiving funds from the federal government, American Rescue Plan Act funds. We are due to receive about 6.3 million. We've received roughly half of that, which has sat untouched in our bank account thus far. And there are some stipulations as to how that money can be used and when it needs to be used by. There's even some concern that our acceptance and utilization of that money might impose upon us some onerous responsibilities that we might not want to deal with. Well, in my discussion with Chris Brown, the executive director at the ATCOG, he is doing some further investigation for me. He is under the impression that in, with his connections with the, you know, at the federal level as well as at the state level, that they don't believe that there's going to be any obligations upon us that would be distasteful. But nonetheless, we're not going to do anything until we're absolutely certain. However, we have begun some discussion with Peoples Telecom about one possible use for some of that ARPA money that would involve expanding broadband services here in the county. And as many of you know, and many of you experience on a day-to-day basis, the internet services throughout this county vary greatly from those that have super high-speed internet, primarily within the city, to those that have absolutely nothing other than perhaps a weak phone signal. And one of the things that I believe that would be of interest to you in considering how to spend some of this money would be to at least listen to what we could do in the way of expanding broadband internet services, especially in certain areas of the county. I don't think that we have anywhere close to enough money to provide high-speed internet broadband to every man, woman, and child in the county, but we can focus on some specific areas that would be most appropriate, I'll use that word. And I want to introduce to you these two gentlemen, Mason and Scott, Mason Duffield and Scott Thompson, from Peoples Telephone Cooperative. Commissioner Fitch and I have visited with them on a couple of occasions, and we have asked them to come today and to introduce this concept to you and tell you what, what some of their ideas are as to what, what might be a good bang for the buck within the county, and show you some maps and things like that. Peoples Telecom would be, in my opinion, the logical entity to deal with in this area. That's not necessarily true throughout the state, but there are different companies that tend to be more prevalent in certain areas, and these gentlemen can probably explain that better. So Mason and Scott, welcome. We invite you up to the podium, both of you, either one of you. And I'm going to turn the meeting over to you and give us a little education on what, what the status of broadband services are here and what we might could accomplish if we were to work with you guys. What we've got here is, for your consideration, a non-binding memorandum of understanding between the county and Peoples Telephone. And that means we're, we're in an investigative phase here. So if you'll come up here to the mic, and that way anybody listening at home on our YouTube channel after this is recorded will be able to hear, hear this information.
Just a little bit about Peoples and our company. It's been an established company since 1952, primarily in the Woods County and Lake Cypress Springs areas where we got our start through growth and grants and everything. We actually have fiber presence in 17 counties in northeast Texas. We go all the way up to the Red River, north of Bonham. We go as far west as Rockwall and the Levon area. If you're familiar with the east part of Dallas, we go all the way down to Tyler, and we have a route that goes all the way down to Athens. We go as far east as 271 in Camp County, Pittsburgh, and then up to Paris. And so that's kind of our, our range right now. So just a little bit about that.
Scott, what other providers are in this area? In other words, explain why Peoples would likely be a logical choice to work with as opposed to other names that you hear in this business?
So our, our primary focus is on rural areas, if you will, unserved areas. And it doesn't always make the best business sense to serve, you know, a less dense population, but that's what we've done. We've worked with the government on federal funds for, for all our, our history. So we're, we're used to doing that. We're used to the reporting requirements of it, the handling of those type of funds. And I think that's what we've seen is just a lack of interest from other providers to want to go into these, these rural areas. But that's, that's kind of our main focus, and that's, that's what we do.
What you have there in front of you is some of the areas that we had previously discussed with Judge Lee and Commissioner Fitch. And we drove these areas out a little bit to see kind of the, the density of the area and see how many homes would be passed and who would be in a benefit from this. And we did a full version of what we originally looked at, and then we kind of came back and did a trimmed version, which you can see that it cut the cost back and that way, because we were going to exceed, or the county would exceed their ARPA funds if they tried to build out everything, of course. And of course, with the cost of everything, that's gone up. So the timing is, the government, you know, so. But conduit has gone up and handholds and et cetera to place this. And some of it's been quite a lead time to get some of this equipment as well. So one of the areas that we discussed was off 3417, since we have fiber that runs down 271, and over to FM 127. And that seemed like a fairly good area if the county was to, to want to move forward and start with a plan and, and start trying to provide a better broadband service. And you can serve both of the highway all the way to FM 127 and actually down to the lakefront to those homes as well. And what we noticed was a lot of wireless satellites on radios on everybody's homes there. So we know that people there are not getting a hardwired connection for their broadband.
And tell us why what they've got is not as good as what we might could achieve here.
With our, with our fiber optics, our slowest speed would be 50 meg. Our fastest would be one gig. And it's hard to receive anything much over 50 meg with wireless. And with people, COVID brought that along, where people were working from home, schooling from home, shopping from home. And that enables them with fiber to have a more reliable service to be able to do anything they want from home. And people use a better internet connection to stream TV now as well. So I'm not sure where the towers are serving those homes in that area, but trees can always be a hinder. So the wireless has to have mainly a line of sight to give you a reliable service. And we're seeing a lot of, more and more people moving out this way and wanting to, if they can work from home, they don't want to live in the metro area. They'd rather live out here in the areas where they can enjoy themselves and have more space. And but one thing that they find is maybe they don't have reliable internet to be able to perform what they need to from home. And I brought our original map that we discussed that we circled, and I can hold this up and let, everything red is where our fiber goes to the county and through Mount Pleasant here. I don't know if anybody can see that or...
Explain how you arrived at, on this map here, you've targeted five, five potential areas, and you describe potential subscribers, like in this patch that say out there by the lake, 489 potential subscribers. That's 489 rooftops that would be served with this. Is that right? Not people?
Yes, that's correct. Those are rooftops. And we have a software that we can pull addresses that it's almost mimics Google Earth, but it actually pulls the address in a certain area that we target. And that's how we came up with those, those number of homes in those areas that would be potentially a customer. We based the cost on 50% take rate, which is if 50% of those people in each one of those polygons would take service, that's what the cost would be to get the fiber to the house, the equipment, and down the main line. So that's where those costs came in at, in, in our engineering, of course, to get that design to do that. So I don't foresee anything as far as the cost changing much. It may, if we have more customers or less, which would mean it could either go a little bit more based upon people taking service, or the cost could go if lesser people take service. But I don't, not sure where it lies with materials. I don't think that's going to change as far as, as, as pricing right now. Right now, we feel like it's probably at 807, so.
And when we identified these one, two, three, four, five areas, we gave you a little bit of input, Commissioner Fitch and I did, as to where we thought, you know, growth was. What other tools do you have to help you identify that these are indeed smart places to, to initiate your expansion?
Mainly it was that we did the driving. We drove out the areas to see what obstacles would hinder us to build to some area. And we really look for the populated area. One thing, though, as well, is if the county is aware of any new development that's going to be in the county, someone buying property and going to build homes, that, that's very helpful because we can get in there and do a dual trench with the electric company, which saves costs as far as building out that way. And that helps builders sell homes. And we're seeing a lot of that over in the Royce City area, is the smaller communities outside of Dallas are growing quite quickly because at one time the land was a little bit cheaper, and now it's, as you get east, things are getting a little better, but it's getting, we're very expensive around that area. And but anything that you know of that's being built in the county, any developers that are looking to expand or build homes, that helps. And those are things that we could put our infrastructure in as well.
And so just for those that don't have a map that may be listening to this later on, Commissioner Fitch, why don't you describe the areas there that we're seeing and kind of, so that they have a better understanding of these, of these particular areas?
All right. I have a question also, too. So going out on 67 East, past the Cookeville area, we have two different plans there. So the second plan, it's a lot smaller distance from Highway 67. So if we did go with that plan, that's a lap about the, where the Loop 4,000 and intersection on 67 and past Cookeville, and we go with that smaller plan, do y'all have plans to add on, if you have customers that want to go on down some of those county roads? Would y'all continue to add services from what we start with on y'all's part?
If we can, if we can make a good business case out of that, and there's multiple homes down some of those roads that would like service, and then we would look at that. And the downsized version of that was just building down 67, and we could serve both sides of the highway with that. And of course?
For the future.
Fiber now is about 75,000 a mile. So if we go down every county road, it'll go very quick.
And maybe add, yeah, if we could add those other 400 customers maybe in the future since we're already developing?
Yes, and we could do market studies in those areas that help.
Okay.
A group of homes down there, and there's 20 homes, and 15 people want service. And we would take a look at every area to see what, of course, not everybody's going to want to subscribe to service. They're good. They want to stay off the, the grid, I guess. But the people that want service, we would definitely visit with them to see what we can do to serve them.
Okay. And then another area is this between, I'd say the airport road right there on 271 at 3417 to 127. Both of those are fairly close, within about 50 people. That is a, what I know about that area personally, it's a really dead zone for internet usage. For anybody can get a signal anyway, even cell phone, it's just terrible. So that is a really bad dead zone right there. A lot of houses right there. So, and then our other area is on the other side of Lake Monticello, that area of Bob Sandlin, Lake Monticello, the Blodgett and Monticello community. Lot of homes, lot of development, so.
We drove down a lot of roads there, and there were some that we went quite a ways before a home. But we would just have to like to look at every, every road as a business case to see what makes the best sense and... makes the best sense and who will really benefit. Like you mentioned down 3417, I think that was a very good area all the way over to 127, because we can serve both sides of the highway and all the way down to the lakefront. And it looked like everyone there that we saw had some sort of a wireless equipment on their home, so we knew that they weren't getting any type of hardwired service.
And then, like I said, as far as, this is a good initial start, kind of surprise these guys. And then looking at down the Harts Bluff Road out 271 north, possibly out by the college, there's some service out there already. We just have to narrow down if we have some other areas to, from going with their skeleton map, where all their services in the county. This, you know, it's got a lot of changing can be done on all this in the future. So it's a good start, and I can get some figures.
The customers that you have right now, do they pay Peoples Telecom, or is it done under a different name? See, I don't know people that you currently use Peoples for their internet. I guess the few that I know are going to be out maybe in the Lake Cypress area. Is that how you do business in Mount Pleasant with your current customer base? Do you market the product as Peoples Telecom?
We do.
Highway 71, Talco is serviced all the way to past Sugar Hill. I don't know how far from 71 it goes. But if that was overlaid over there, it would show that northern part of the county has a lot of customers and Peoples.
And we have fiber that goes out to Chapel Hill School, and then over to college. And we actually have a wireless offering, fixed wireless offering at the tower and college that we serve a lot of those folks with fixed wireless.
What's the normal distance that you can come off of a tire with?
You know, and it's based on line of sight, trees and terrain and transportation. We can go up to 10 miles. And then I think we can do 50 meg up to 10 miles if it's a clean side. Typically, you're going to be in the three to four mile range.
The reason I was asking that, I live in that area east of town here on the north side of 49. And I had y'all come out here a couple, three weeks ago and check mine. They said it was just, it was right at the edge, and they were just afraid that it, you know, wouldn't be good enough. But I've got a friend back up the road, back towards the college, that has put up a tire, and he's getting 25 to 30 meg up there. And I was just wondering, you know, if there were more tires in that area that y'all could tie to that would help or whatever.
And actually, the idea that we try to build off of, build tiny institutions or towers, and that kind of gets your big money, if you will. And then from there on, we start serving residents, you know, either off the tower or build off the main fiber lines going to the houses from there.
Can you give him a microphone?
Another thing we're going to try to work with, Jimmy, is with the city and their money that they're going to spend. We're working with Nathan Tafoya and Economic Development Corporation. They're going to need to be servicing some places around the outskirts, right on the city limits, in town even, with some Peoples, that would benefit us to put a little money with some of those areas and maybe head your way, out the east first way. I know right there at Harts Bluff Road in the industrial park, that new big building they have out there, it's not serviced. So they're planning on getting Peoples in that area, so there may be a central located tower or something. We may all can go together and develop their city limits parts that they need, and then some of ours in the county, too. So some of this will change as we get with them, and they get their plan together, and we kind of cooperate back and forth. This could lead to several more meetings.
One thing we found out, correct me if I'm wrong, Sa, but we can build fiber, it qualifies to build fiber to a location, we just can't, the funds can't be used to build a tower.
Right. These ARPA funds are, so we can build to a tower, but including the tower and anything that's put on the tower, that would kind of be on our dime or a shared general fund dime, whatever, you know, that works. But they're pretty particular that they want these funds used for fiber, not just any lesser broadband application.
Yeah, the fiber, and it's got a certain speed. They have to go by minimum, which is a good speed, high speed. And we're talking about working in the future, continuing this on with some other grants, maybe in the future. I know the city's working on some grant that they're going to get some monies, and some of those grants can be used for towers and such. So this can continue on in the future, because they're good to help with knowing when these grants are available. Hey, y'all need to apply for this grant and have them onboard. That helps a lot. So it's baby steps at first, and then get a start. And then I think it's something that's going to grow, and as we continue, every year, we'll end up covering most of the county. Slow process.
And we've visited several counties, and it's the most challenging part is where do you start? And where is the most beneficial area for the county? And that's what we've visited before, tried to see what would be a good start. And building up every road just isn't feasible. And the timing of the funds and the grants that are being tossed out there in Congress, and they're trying. It's just that the biggest challenge is the county is to figure out where is this going to benefit people and, you know, make your county appealing for any new growth and et cetera, so.
I think we have to have a plan in place by the end of 2023. Barbara?
We have to have, we have to have developed funds, let's flip them by December 31st of 2024, and we have to expedite those by December 31st of 2026.
So we have some time. Get it all together.
The, these proposed areas and the dollar figures you've got with them, what exactly does that get us? In other words, is that Titus County funding the entire cost to get you all these new customers? Do you supplement what we pay to get these new customers? How does that work?
Well, we would look at some of the areas if we build fiber down, let's say, we call it main line, if we go down a road and there's an area we're trying to reach that the county is specifically wanting to target, and there's homes off another road that we didn't go down, and we would look at that as a business case to see what can we do to serve those customers. You know, if there was one house and it was 10 miles down the road, obviously, that probably wouldn't be a good fit with the cost of fiber. But everything we would look at, and we do that today, we look at how can we serve these customers? And if we have enough people in that area, we're going to take a look at it and make a business case out of it. So yes, we would have some of this money. These areas would be on us to build to those people, so.
But to cover the number of rooftops that you've got listed here, that's us paying the cost of getting the trunk lines out there and then reaching these specific homes?
Correct, yes. We tried to outline it in the reality side of this is what fiber and, you know, building that network infrastructure would cost, and including all the engineering and materials and to get to the people in those certain areas. And so we tried to make it as reality as we could, so it doesn't look on paper like, well, that's cheap, let's do all this area. So that's what we came up with, was the numbers there, the addresses that are in those areas that we had kind of previously discussed. And but...
Without the county paying for some of this, explain why Peoples doesn't do the same thing and look at these areas, hey, look at all the new customers we could get, let's go spend our own money. Kind of explain how that works when you're deciding how much new infrastructure to build as compared to how many new customers, you know? How does that work? Why does Peoples not build out the entire county? I mean, I know the answer, but I kind of want you to explain why you just, you can't spend that much money for that number of customers. It's just not enough to give you a reasonable payback, and why supplementary dollars coming from ARPA enables you to do things that you might not do under your own business plan?
Well, that'd be a good question for the CFO.
I'll let him answer that one. So, you know, obvious resources are limited. We can only support, so we'd like...
I would say I'd turn around on my money in three years, you know, after we spend a million bucks, I would like to make that million bucks back in three years, and then after three years, be able to use that cash flow to go build somewhere else.
So anytime, the cost of building rural areas is hard to make a business case out of without some type of funding. The debt that we can support, we're pretty well there, so we're continuously looking for other funding sources to help us grow. Once the network is built, you know, it's on us to maintain, enhance, and grow from there, and add additional subscribers, and just the maintenance of a network with all the development that goes on every time those things in the ground, our fiber that's around, so coming in won't cut it. I mean, that costs money to go out there and locate our facilities. We've got a lot of areas where we go into subdivisions, new subdivisions that are coming in, where the houses are just right next to each other. And those areas, it makes sense for us to put our own dollars in there. You don't have to have other funding resources because you make your money back in less than a year in a lot of cases. Little areas, what did the cost on these passings come out to? About $5,500 or so? You know, passing, you know, that takes a while to make your money back. And so that's kind of why we're always looking for funding sources to help build out these rural areas.
What we've seen, of course, everybody knows who Google is, and when they were overbuilding existing communities like your Austin, Kansas City, and Denver area, what they found was that it's very expensive to go in and try to overbuild something that's already built. And so we learned from people like that, that have tried something, and we tried to look at it differently. So the funding helps us and hopefully helps the communities that we serve achieve the goals that they want, so.
What is it that you're asking the county to consider? Tell us about what would happen if we were to agree to enter into this non-binding agreement? What does that mean? What's the next step?
Well, the next step would be to pinpoint the area that you feel like that would make the biggest impact of building fiber in the county. And unless there's some other areas that we missed in our discussions, those were the areas that we kind of targeted that had the most appeal to the people living there or going down the main line. So that would be the next step, is to just determine where's a good start. Where do we start applying funds and building the fiber network where it's beneficial to the county?
And then we would come back and decide, okay, we've identified the areas, it's going to cost this much, we only want to spend this much, or we can only spend this much. And then we decide what area to spend that money on, and we agree upon a price that we're going to pay you. And then we're talking about a process until somebody could actually flip the switch on new internet service. What are we talking about? Two years, five years?
Well, an example on 3417, that would probably take six months to build that out all the way to 127, to be an example. Because we looked at the homes passed and the main line, but that would be probably a rough guesstimate on when, an area is determined for that area would be, since there's not as many roads going down to the lake, but that would be an estimate that we would look at as, you know, six months, maybe eight months. But within a year, we would have service to people, and they would be utilizing the network.
Okay. Are the trunk lines already here, and we're just building out those last, the last mile or whatever you call it, to reach these individual houses? Or does this include taking the initial trunk line to these areas?
Yes, and that's like our fiber here. So say 3417, we would connect to that and go on over to 127, and then off that, we would build to the people off the highway both ways and all the way down to the lakefront.
So we've got to get the trunk line off of an existing trunk, and right now, there's a big gap there in, I'll call it, the southwest quadrant of the county there. And we've got to get the trunk line out there, then we've got to get the branches to the individual homes, yeah, both of those.
Now, on 3417, we have a cabinet there in the industrial park by Newlywed Foods. So, and for that build, we wouldn't have to add the electronics for a trunk line. We'd just have to extend the fiber, as it would. The electronics are there and ready to serve. We just build the fiber. And in the southwest part, I think we probably have to drop a cabinet in that area.
What's the word? A what?
Well, it's a cabinet that has our electronics in there.
Cabinet?
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
So we're basically entering just an agreement so we can start planning and get some ideas together. We also have some other options for some other internet companies. Been talking with EDC about it. We want to explore those, too. I don't know if it'll be countywide, one, Peoples would not, I don't know if they'll have the whole county. We may have a couple of different companies that can come in here, we can utilize to do other areas or whatever. So there's a lot to, it's a big picture here. This is just a start with Peoples, and that's not saying we're going to use them 100%. There's some other options, too, that we hadn't got that far to explore them all yet. Working through Nathan Tafoya, we had some meetings, and we're still trying to find out what's our best plan for broadband. So that's another thing I wanted to say. And we hadn't, certainly, we hadn't said we're going to spend all 6.2 million just on internet. We may just do some and use the money for other things as we find out other things we can spend it on, so.
Who are the other primary broadband suppliers in Titus County besides Suddenlink, I think of, because I'm a Suddenlink customer who primarily serves within the city limits? Who are some of the others?
It's mail, AT&amp;T. So it'd be AT&amp;T, who's the incumbent, and then, of course, Suddenlink, the cable provider. So in the requirements, they have a, how you qualify an area. If the current home cannot get a hardwired internet connection of 25 meg and three upload, then it qualifies. And it has to be at least 100 by 100, which makes it only fiber. So that's how the government has worded that. So that's how these areas would qualify, because currently, in those areas, nobody is getting 25 meg download and 3 meg upload hardwired to their house. That doesn't mean wireless, it's hardwired. So that's how these areas qualify. And we look at an FCC map that tells us those areas because they're being reported, so.
That's an important point. The government defines what is, and when you say the term broadband, does that, is that only a high-speed term, or does that cover from the slowest to the fastest?
It covers everything. They just call it broadband.
It's high speed, then, is the term that we use to describe what areas have high speed versus don't have high speed? Have I got that right?
And it's the FCC definition of broadband, which has changed from 10 down, one up speed, to 25 down, to three up, to now 100 by 100 symmetrical. So their definition of broadband is, you can call it high speed or whatever, but the FCC definition of broadband is what we, the requirements that we meet.
And so that's where they want you to spend your ARPA money? And so, that's where they want you to spend your ARPA money is in an area that is below that threshold?
Correct. Yes.
Okay.
What they want is how they define that is so someone doesn't just take the word broadband and provide a wireless or...
Yeah, it has to be certain speed. It's got to be off fiber.
We don't need more of that 10-1. We need that 25-3 at least or 100 by 100.
Correct.
And the same reason that we don't say, well, why can't, why aren't we talking to Suddenlink or why aren't we talking to AT&amp;T? They've pretty much said, this is it. You know, we're not expanding beyond our current footprint. We're just not in the rural business. We want to go where there's high density and that's it. I mean, that's what I've heard from them.
Their business structure is a little different, like Scott gave me, the background of Peoples Telephone Cooperative. We're a rural telephone provider and it's just, see with what we provide now, now with the internet, fiber and some of the other companies, I see that maybe they have other entities that they would rather spend their money towards or, like Judge Lee just said, is more populated areas where our background is to go to the rural communities and try to improve what is already there, so.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions about this stuff? There's no dumb questions. I've asked all my dumb ones earlier.
I will say, done a lot of calling and Peoples tends to business. They call you back, answer your questions. They really want to help get this done as well. They do. I want to also bring in Nathan Tefolia sometime and have him explain a few other options and then how we can work together with Peoples and whoever else that would help, that qualify for funding out of this grant, so.
Now? Yeah, if you'll grab a mic back there for Scott.
As you know, I'm retired from school business and I retired from Mount Vernon. Y'all were very, very helpful to us at Mount Vernon. Thank you very much. But I do want to caution you that we don't need to move forward with something like this until we have a grant manager in place. And we, frankly, I don't think we should be talking to a vendor until we go out for bids on these things because here's the problem. Peoples will likely do us a very good job. That's not what I'm saying. You know, I anticipate that y'all will do us a good job. But we've got to meet those federal bidding requirements, which are much, much more strict than the bidding requirements that we make for the county funds. And we don't want there to be a vendor out there, AT&amp;T or anybody, who says, well, I didn't get to participate in the planning. Because we all know whoever drives the planning is going to have a better opportunity to place the bid and to get the bid because they're going to know more of the details. So, my recommendation to you is that we do not move forward with Peoples today, that we first get a grant manager who can manage those purchasing requirements and make sure that we follow those requirements. Nothing against Peoples. In fact, I'm going to have my husband call y'all today because I was about 2:71. But I do want to caution you about that. I don't think we should move forward with Peoples until we get a grant manager in place and make sure that we're meeting all those requirements. I don't think the county needs to take a chance on this kind of money and doing it wrong. And I don't know what the requirements are because, I mean, I mentioned to you before that the interim requirements are 20, over 27,000 pages.
You're just spoiling our fun.
I'm sorry. I would like to know, are y'all working with other counties surrounding us? I mean, on the American Rescue Plan already or are you just looking to do that?
We have visited with some counties and invited vets to go over there and some, I believe one county has hired like an administrator to allocate and help manage. So, they, they're getting towards those goals, but it was, most of it is just kind of preliminary vision about what they would like to try to do or where do you guys go? And that's kind of, you know, so that's, it's all, everybody's pretty much on the same, in the same boat of this with all the counties. They're trying to determine what should they do? How will this, if they go with broadband, how will this improve the county? And where should we go? And that way, everybody, so, yeah, you're very correct on everything because it is, most, few of the counties have already hired somebody to help them, you know, add them in.
I appreciate your comments and my intentions, you know, a few weeks ago when we set this up was to just kind of give a general overall, high-level education to the commissioners that this was a possible consideration for ARP funds. And I tend to agree with you that going with a non-binding, even though it's a non-binding, you've given some good reasons as to why. Maybe that's one step too far at this point. But I'm still glad to have been able to converse with you guys about this, help us to understand what kind of dollars, generally speaking, would be involved. In other words, what does a million dollars get you? You know, how much of the county can you cover? When we talk about spending $6 million, it sounds like, oh, my goodness, you can cover the whole county with that. Well, no, you can't. You can cover some high density. You know, I don't know if any of this is high density, but you can cover some of the more dense areas. And so, we're certainly not closing the book on Peoples, but I think Barbara, we pay Barbara to keep us from getting in trouble. And so, that doesn't mean we're going to slow down or shelve this. It just means we may need to get, you know, some, another step may need to come in there first. But I appreciate the education you've given us thus far and showing us kind of the areas that you think would be logical starting points. So, I'm quite certain we will be back talking with you soon. And in fact, I was going to encourage the commissioners to allow me to put back on the agenda the process of going out for a request for proposal or request for qualifications for a grant manager. I do think that it's time we at least start that process. And then, you know, we'll let them give us guidance on to who do we bring back next in addition to Peoples? How do we begin that process to where we're absolutely following government guidelines? But I thank you for the, what you've given us here and the time you've put into this. And again, you've got these guys here. If there's any questions that any of you has, just to strengthen your understanding and your education about the possibility of broadband getting, you know, a significant number of our ARP dollars, here's your chance. Doesn't cost you anything today.
Well, I know we're going to have a lot of steps in place. We're going to have a lot of meetings. We're going to have to pinpoint, you see how much money covers what. It's a needle in a haystack. We're going to have to agree to make the best bang for our buck and get the areas we want to service and find the companies that can do it and go by these federal guidelines. And, yeah, I agree with all that and want to be cautious. We do have until 2025, 2026 to really get the ball rolling on this, but hopefully, we can do something in the next, this coming year, so.
Well, I think we need to have the ball rolling a lot sooner than that. Now, today, I don't know that we need to start it today, but I think we need to keep the process going and whether I bring to you more broadband or we consider other possible uses for the ARP money. Nonetheless, we need to have regular discussions, you know, each month about what some of the possibilities are, have a better understanding of just how far will our money go. And I still think that there's going to be a real short list of players that we're talking to in the broadband field because I know, you know, we may want to give them an opportunity to come and talk to us, but I don't think we're going to see Suddenlink and I don't think we're going to see AT&amp;T at the table. Nonetheless, we want to be sure we've gone about it in the right way. Thank you very much. I'm grateful for Barbara and her comments. I think that gives us some good insight there. And, you know, I think that for today, guys, I want to get you a copy of this memorandum of understanding and see exactly what it covers here, but I think that today, we would be well-served to have just listened and let's table consideration of going into an MOU. Again, not because we didn't like what Peoples had to say, just because Barbara says it's better to go about this in the proper order.
I agree with that.
And so, therefore, if I could get one of you to make a motion, again, that's my recommendation. If there's something else you want to consider here, that's fine as well.
I'll make a motion. We table it until we get some more information or get somebody to take care of it for us.
Okay. I'll just say that we are going to table item number seven until a future, until a future date. Second? Second. Any further comments or discussions? All in favor, say aye. All right. Mason, Scott, thank you very much. We look forward to continuing this conversation with you at some point and making plans. We, I'm a big believer in getting broadband out to our county residents there in the rural areas. This is something that's very important to me because I think it's important for the future of Titus County to stay competitive in the, you know, in growth and development and economic expansion here. We've got to be able to provide this. And so, again, I think we'll be talking again soon. So, thank you. Happy holidays. We'll stay in touch. Appreciate it. Yeah?
Yes. So, we received a grant on the south side of Lake Bob Salin in Camp County and I drove those roads out one afternoon. Those roads are horrendous. I rose in Titus County or 10 times better than Camp County, so.
Thanks, Scott.
That's good to know. Thank you.
Have a good one.
Thank you all. Bye-bye. All right. Barbara, thank you for keeping us in line. All right. Item number eight. Gosh, I can't tell you what good news this was to me, but back well over a year ago, in fact, probably two years ago, the commissioners agreed to, as we did back in 2010, to hire Allison Bass, it was Allison Bass then, it's Allison Bass and McGee now, to help us with the task of redistricting after the results of the 2020 census were received. 10 years ago, when you, when we made that decision, were you in office by the time that we made the decision? Okay, now, I guess this was...
When we made the decision to hire them.
Were we just made a slight little line change that changed just a few dozen of...
No, we changed it. I wasn't, no.
Okay. Well, I guess I'm the only one that's still around, but 10 years ago, when we had to do some redistricting in order to keep balance between the four precincts and the number of people within those precincts, we ended up making just a sliver of change that affected, I want to say, less than 150 people to keep us in a nice balance. I certainly anticipated that we would do at least that after the 2020 census. I didn't know what the population figures were going to show and even if there was minimal growth or a lot of growth, what it comes down to is where did that growth go? Was it evenly spread amongst the four precincts? Did it all flow to one and throw us out of balance? But redistricting is mandatory if your four precincts have a maximum deviation between the percentage of increase and the percentage of decrease. For example, let's say that 10 years ago, your population is exactly 25% amongst the four precincts. You've got 25% of the population in each of those four. And let's say that 10 years later, we come along and one has gone up 7% and another has gone down 5% and another has gone down 2%. You take that maximum increase, in my example, of 7%, plus the maximum decrease of 4% there, and you have an 11% swing from the top to the bottom. By definition, you have exceeded that 10% threshold and you have to do redistricting in order to get your numbers back in line. What we saw this year is, after it was all said and done and the numbers were in, we not only were below 10%, we're below 5%. And so, let me tell you what Eric McGee presented to me here a couple of weeks ago and his letter backs up. And the bottom line is, the good news is, we don't, not only do we not have to make any changes, it is Allison Bass and McGee's recommendation that we don't make any changes. And if this is what we decide to do, that's going to save us a good bit of money. For one thing, it's going to save us having to spend any more money with Allison Bass and McGee and it makes things a lot easier for the Elections Administration office and it makes things easier for our constituents, not having to force them to make a change in their precincts. So, let me read you this November 3rd letter from Eric McGee with Allison Bass. Dear Judge and Commissioners, you'll find attached to this letter our initial assessment of your existing political boundaries based on population data extracted from the census. The total maximum deviation between the largest and smallest existing precincts in terms of population is under tab B of this initial assessment. As long as this number is below 10%, the county is not legally obligated to redraw political boundaries. However, if the total maximum deviation exceeds approximately 7%, you may want to consider redistricting in order to rebalance your boundaries, although you're not legally required to. The total maximum deviation for Titus County based on the census is 4.78 total maximum deviation percentage. In other words, the highest plus the lowest without the prison population included. Based upon this number, you will not be legally obligated to move forward with redistricting. If the court determines that the county would be better served to redraw boundaries now, you may also have a desire to redraw election precincts, address, excuse me, address issues related to your JP precincts or other matters. We would be glad to discuss these matters with you. I'm in closing orders for your consideration, one, an order to retain existing political boundaries or an order for redistricting of political boundaries, depending upon what direction you want to go. So, again, we're not legally obligated to. If you feel like there is some reason that we should take this further and say, well, thanks for your recommendation, but we still want to make some adjustments within our political boundaries. And so, that would mean not only, we're not just talking about redrawing the lines for the four commissioner precincts. You could redraw lines for JP precincts and for even for voting precincts. You know, we talk about all kinds of precincts. We want to be sure that we understand what we're talking about and we've got a lot of different voting precincts, as we know, and I don't think she's made any secret about it. Pam Holmes believes that we've got too many voting precincts. I believe we have too many voting precincts. I think in the name of being conservative and efficient with the voting process, we should reduce that number, but I understand that that's often a difficult pill for a commissioner to swallow and I'm not here to ram that down your throats. So, I don't know what you want to do here today. You've heard what the recommendation of Allison Bass is. You don't have to do anything. If there is any further redistricting of any of these boundaries that you want to talk about, let's get it out there right now. If you want us to take their recommendation that if it ain't broke, don't fix it and leave everything the way it is. We can sign off on this document here today to retain existing political boundaries and we're done with the redistricting process for 2020. Any comments, questions, discussion? Now is the time.
I make a motion. We accept their recommendation.
Second? I have a motion and a second. Leonard, welcome today. Do you have any, I'm just curious if you have any comments on this subject?
My concern is always concerning a minority district. We don't have one in Titus County, but we have a, not a majority, but we have one that's, I don't know, about 60 top percent majority would be Mr. Fitch's precinct. And, you know, I mean, I'm satisfied as long as we don't, you know, lose that, don't dilute that, would be fine with me, as long as we not, as long as we not backing up and, you know, diluting that. Or, you know, I know some people wonder about why we're concerned about a minority district. I mean, it's not necessarily that we want to, you know, that people want to put a minority candidate, but the minority people would have an opportunity to put in office who they would like to be. I mean, not necessarily minorities, so, but that's my only, would be my only concern. So, you know, if you're not diluting that precinct, you know, that we'd have at least some semblance of a minority precinct would be good.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? I don't want to rush this. This is an important decision we make every 10 years. I think that the rationale is pretty clear, but nonetheless, if there's anybody that has anything to say about this on this bench, now's your chance.
I think it's good, and I'm happy with the slight change that the census said, and I take their recommendation, leave it like it is. I think it's good advice.
I have a motion. I have a second. All those in favor of, let's see exactly how this word is, approving an order to retain existing political boundaries after the results have been received here from the census and with the recommendation of Allison Bass and McGee, our consultants, to leave those boundaries the same. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Very good. All right. That's good news for us. That sure makes things a lot easier and a lot less expensive. So, I will get that signed. I'll look through it and see if that requires all of our signatures. Would you, while I move to the next thing? Item number nine, discuss moving funds from the sale of surplus equipment that we got liquidated through Auctioneer Express to the precinct accounts with possible action. And the purpose for putting this on here, help me with this one, Barbara, is just to give you official directive as to what to do with those sale funds rather than applying it somewhere else. The commissioners, sounds to me like, would like for those funds to come back into their precincts. They've liquidated old surplus, worn-out equipment, and would like to be able to take those monies and use it for whatever other things that they may want to purchase within their own individual precincts.
That's correct, Judge. The money goes back to the source of the items that were sold. So, they go back into those precincts, some to the sheriff. But the reason for this here is because I believe that some of the commissioners and possibly the sheriff would like to spend some of those funds. So, we'll have to have a budget amendment, and you'd ask us to not just put that as a budget amendment, to have a separate line item. So, this is just following that line.
And we're not, we're not just taking the monies from those liquidated assets and splitting them 25% each. It goes back into the precinct that actually sold that piece of equipment. So, if a precinct didn't have any liquidated used equipment, they wouldn't be getting these funds. It's going to go back to where it came from.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions about that? And if not, if you're okay with this, and it certainly makes sense, I mean, it seems to me to be the logical thing to do, but we just wanted to get it documented with your approval.
I'll make a motion. We move the funds.
Motion is made by Commissioner Parchman to take the sale proceeds from surplus equipment and put it back in the entity from whence it came.
Second?
Second, Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number 10, approve oral and written reports.
Make a motion. We approve the reports.
Motion's made for approval by Commissioner Fitch.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Parchman. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Item number 11 is to take a look at and approve Cheryl's treasurer's report.
Make that motion.
Motion to approve the treasurer's report is made by Commissioner Parker and seconded by Commissioner, you made it, and the motion was made by Commissioner Applewhite, and it was seconded by Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye. Item number 12, approved budget amendments. We have one budget amendment, item number 2022-005. So, this is the fifth adjustment for the new budget year. And this one is, I'll let Barbara give us some more details, but this is a move or a movement within some accounts to consolidate line items for the right-of-way acquisition, utility relocation, and the closing costs that go with each of those parcels. Will you please explain to us the logic behind doing it this way, which I totally agree with, it does make things easier, but why we can do this and?
When we set the budget up, we used the numbers that were provided from Tech dot in 2020, was their latest estimate. Since that time, things have changed. Gary Lubas and David Ivins are out there now working on the relocation, the right-of-way acquisitions, and then the utility relocations. So, the amounts that Tech dot had originally told us are going to change. They won't know exactly what those are going to be until after the right-of-way has been acquired and the utility relocations have begun, and Tech dot's not going to release even the plans for the utility relocations until after January. So, my request to you is that we consolidate these funds into one line item and pay all those costs from there. Some of the costs are higher, some of the costs are lower, but the net impact is zero because at this point, we believe that there's sufficient funds available to meet the requirements for what we have to purchase out there and the utility relocation.
And this keeps us from having to address this issue down the road. So, the numbers that we set up that were based upon estimates and predictions to buy that right-of-way, to pay Gary Lubas' company, to pay for utility relocation, closing costs, what they will actually end up being are going to deviate, obviously, from those estimates. So, let's just take those individual line items that we set up and call it acquisition and utility costs for FM 1735. And so, as we pay those, we're not having to apply those monies into four different individual budget, or three different individual line items. It'll just be one line item. And we still have about $3.6 million set aside that are available for this. At this point, we still have every reason to believe that will be more than adequate monies to take care of finalizing this project. And again, as we move forward and have to deal with a couple of pieces of property that are going to have to go through condemnation, not because of a fight with the landowner, but because of some liens that were on a couple of these properties that had nothing to do with, you know, the county, and in fact, maybe nothing to do with the current landowner. It may have been a previous family member or something, but we know we're going to have to deal with a couple of condemnations. And so, this is kind of a cleanup, a preemptive move to make accounting for this project easier. So, that will need your approval. That is the only budget amendment I've got.
Make the motion.
If someone would approve that, and Commissioner Applewhite makes a motion to approve budget item number five for the 2022 budget year.
Second?
All in favor, say aye. Item 13, sign-pay orders and approve payments. Jimmy's not here. Who on earth is going to do it this time? Okay. Commissioner Applewhite stepping up. I like that. Did I give a second? Second by Commissioner Fitch. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That brings us to our final closing comment time in item number 14. I just wanted to, most of you know this by now, what a tragedy. Just two brief weeks ago, at our last meeting, we had right there at that podium, one of our volunteer firefighters, Ross Estabrook, who tragically passed away on the scene of a small fire of an apparent heart attack. I haven't gotten official results, but I mean, we're talking about just within a couple, few days of him presenting here and just a few weeks after the tragic passing of Wesley Vanderweer. So, I just want to let everybody know that Ross Estabrook, one of our volunteer firefighters, passed away unfortunately on the scene of him being right there, participating along with several others, in extinguishing a fire, a relatively small fire, but nonetheless, don't know what was going on in his heart at that very moment. I'm sure that the stress was high, as it always is, but we send out our condolences to the Estabrook family in this tragic loss. Item number two, I'm happy to report that on Friday last, three days ago, the final walkthrough of the Justice Center occurred with the contractor, with the JPs, with the constables and their employees to examine the results of the freshly remodeled, renovated, improved Justice Center there. And it is a fantastic building. The job went well. It came in on schedule. Now, as you can imagine, the process of moving back into that building by all these people, getting their stuff out of storage, transporting it from their current offices where they've been for the last nine months or so, back into their building is a dawning task that will not occur within a matter of hours. It's going to take a matter of days. So, their official decision is that they will be closing their offices until December 6th, at which time they will reopen to the public. This will give them a chance to get everything moved back, organized, make sure their electronics are all back working, their communications are all back working, so that they are not fumbling and stressed when the general public shows up to take care of business that it needs to be taken care of within the JP departments. So, that's what's going on right now. If you have not seen the building, I would encourage you to do so. I spoke with Glenn Calvert yesterday at church, and Glenn is going to try to get over there tomorrow to give his final inspection on that building. Of course, we asked those guys to do that for us and to be the professionals that examined that building and made sure everything was done right. So, I hope we have not gotten ahead of him, but his fellow coworker there, Wade Clark, that presented several times to us, is no longer with Preford, so there's been an extra load of work on Glenn's shoulders, and so he will get over there hopefully this week to give his perspective on how the job turned out. I know that the JPs are very pleased with it. So, again, if you haven't had a chance, go over there and take a look at it. Steve Aghan asked me if they should have a grand opening, and I said certainly not before you all are back in and settled and organized, and I think that will probably occur if, not, probably not even late December, but possibly. At least in January, we'll give the general public a chance to take a look at that building. That's all I've got. Commissioner Parchman?
No.
Commissioner Fitch?
I certainly want to give my condolences to the Ross Estabrooks family. He was Assistant Chief for Tri-Lakes Volunteer Fire Department. He's going to be greatly missed, and he was, gave us a great service out there. And the Maclay Blodgett community, we all have heavy hearts over it, as well as the fire department community. He's really going to be truly missed.
Commissioner Applewhite?
Yeah, I'd like to send out prayers for all those that is talked about and a few others that we know about are heavy hearts, and want to wish everybody a happy holidays and safe this week and everything. Happy holidays.
Commissioner Parker?
I want to send my condolences out to the Estabrook family. I know it's got to be hard, but I just like to send my condolences out to them and also wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. I did do the walkthrough over the building Friday with them as they done it, and it's a nice building. I will tell Stansville Construction that they've done a good job with it.
Good deal. All right. That's all I have for today. 10:30 almost. If there's a motion to adjourn, we'll wrap it up.
Make a motion.
Motion is made by Commissioner Applewhite.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parchman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.